Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop at Wilson School. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer. Would the students like to lead us in the pledge?
Good morning, everyone. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amani McBean. I am the captain of the Wilson Student Leadership Team. I am a fifth grader and have been a student at Wilson with Ms. Rossar as principal since kindergarten. We would like to welcome all our board members, staffs, and families to our school. As we are sharing Black History facts every day this month during our morning announcements, I would like to share two Black History facts with you. Do you love peanut butter? Peanut butter was invented by a black man, George Washington Carver, who discovered 400 uses for peanuts, soybeans, sweet potatoes, and pecans in the process. He transformed lunchtime into sandwiches forever young. And red light, green light. The next time you're waiting at a red light, tell your parents or friends that it was invented by Garrett Morgan. Morgan's other invention, the gas mask, also saves lives. Many soldiers survived the First World War thanks to the gas mask. This is our history. And now the student leaders would like to sing our PAWS pledge for you. We sing this pledge together every morning with the entire school to get everyone jump-started, ready to learn, and committed to being kind to each other all day. I pledge today to do my best in reading, math, and all the rest. I promise to follow all the rules in the classroom and throughout the school. As a Wilson Wolf, I will pay attention, I will act respectfully, I will work smart, I will stay safe. What do we get in return? Everyone has the right to learn. Anything is possible at what your Wilson School, yeah! Thank you again for visiting our school.
Thank you for having us. Thank you very much, boys and girls, you did a great job. Thank you very much for being here, and we do have our projector backup. It's backup, okay. Just pull it out from the top. Well, again, thank you, everyone, for being here. Ms. Coelho, my partner, if you'll join me up here, please. Ms. Coelho, our assistant principal here at Wilson, has joined us this year, and I am very, very grateful to have her with me as my partner. Thank you, Ms. Coelho. We are using this projector and set up because we're going to be having a projector put up in the ceiling soon and be able to use the larger screen. So I hope that you can see our presentation from here. So first of all, just an overview of what we hope to share with you today is, of course, the vision and mission of our school and our involvement in supporting The Portrait of a Graduate, some school data, and our work with the social-emotional learning, as well as our student leadership team, which you did get to see a little snippet of their participation in our school, our Family Resource Center, parent engagement and community partnerships, and our after-school programs, which, as a matter of fact, just dismissed as everybody was arriving. Thank you. Our vision statement, Woodrow Wilson is a united learning community, leading our students to high achievement as we work together hand in hand to support every child at their level of instructional, social, and emotional need. Our mission statement, Woodrow Wilson is dedicated to a collaborative, student-centered learning community that involves all stakeholders to provide all students an engaging and meaningful education that motivates them to reach their full potential and enables them to discover their interests and talents, pursue their goals and dreams, and succeed in college, in the workforce, and as a productive citizen now and in the future. As we move into Portrait of a Graduate and our efforts to support this work, we develop a path for all students pre-K to fifth grade, readying them for middle school, high school, college, and careers, and we focus on the following. What should a graduate from Waterbury Public Schools know? What should a graduate be able to do? What qualities of mind and character should a graduate from Waterbury Public Schools possess? What experiences should we provide for students to enable them to develop the desired knowledge, skills, and dispositions indicative of a Waterbury Public School student? These pictures may be hard to see at your distance, and I apologize for that. Yes, it will. There you go. There you are. Okay. So as we look at our Portrait of a Graduate and our collaborative work with the Waterbury Career Academy, they're our partners. As you can see from the pictures, we have students that come occasionally to work in their early childhood program, so they support our students here while also getting the experience that they are working towards in their early childhood program at Waterbury Career Academy. One more picture. This is just another picture of that collaborative work that we do with Waterbury Career Academy, our wonderful neighbors. You can see in one picture that we are all gathered with our PE teacher, the basketball players, some of the students, myself, and Dr. Padua. Every year, at March Madness time, we have a March Madness event here, and it's called the College and Career Readiness Program. And we tie it into not only a fundraiser, but also math learning for students on probability and determining the Final Four. And we have a bulletin board, and we do the brackets. And then the Career Academy helps us at the basketball team, because our PE teacher as well. We all come together, and we have a Day of March Madness here. And the children get to learn how to play basketball from the high school students, as well as the staff engages, and we have a great time connecting the athletic program at the high school level, connecting it to the college Final Four, and that excitement. And we try to share with them the importance of how, if they love basketball or the sports, this is the path. This is how these famous players come about. They play during their elementary years, maybe at Powell, go on to middle school, maybe play on a middle school team, move on to high school, move on to college, and fulfill that sports dream. And, boy, do they ever have a great time when we do this. And we also, as a school, to emphasize the college and career readiness, each teacher will put what colleges they are from, graduated from, and we post those outside of our classrooms so we can have engaging conversations with the students about the colleges that we attended and how it relates to our current careers. So we have also a day where we will wear the college, our favorite college t-shirt, our favorite team, so we tie all that together, and our partners next door help us out with connecting that high school basketball with that whole activity. They also support us on our field day, and this is why I bring up Ms. Carrera, our PE teacher. She is very actively involved in collaborating with the Career Academy as well in our field day. They allow us to use their facility and their field next door when we have beautiful weather for that event, and our children do love it. And we thank them for sharing their beautiful campus with us. So that's just some of our work that we're doing to encourage Portrait of a Graduate. Thank you very much. Now we'll move into just a snippet of data. This data shows our Smarter Balance in Math and ELA. And this is a graph of students meeting or exceeding the achievement level. And I decided to use this data because this is the type of study we will get from the interim assessments that we are using currently, the IABs, that we are preparing students for the test. It's giving us a good reading of how close our children are to their achievement level at this point as we work up to the actual Smarter Balance testing. So if we look back, we have from 2014-15, if you look at the math over here to the left, you can see that we've had a steady progressive growth in students meeting or exceeding their achievement level. And we're proud of that continuous growth in math. As we move over to the ELA side, you will see that we had a huge growth 2014-15 year to 15-16 in our children's meeting or exceeding the achievement level, but we began to drop back slightly in the last two years. And there was a district trend of that same situation, and we are doing amazing things to counteract that now. And I'd like to share what those things are that we are doing. One, in fact, is making sure, I think our next screen will talk about some of the planning and progress monitoring that we're doing along the year to make sure that we are going to meet our goals. We have a school improvement committee that developed our school improvement plan aligned to the district goals. We focus on every Student Succeeds Act, which is the ESSA targets, the content-specific English Language Arts and Math, and school-wide instructional data teams, and collaborative planning weekly with the coaches. The administrators meet weekly with our content coach and facilitator in planning instructional leadership team, as an instructional leadership team, to plan in our future instructional practices, monitoring our progress, our usage of our programs, as well as developing support. Because we've had some new programs introduced this year, the Wonders Program, our Science Program, and we're working very hard to implement them to fidelity. We use M-Class as an ongoing measure of our students' instructional level. So M-Class helps us to identify the level that the student is performing, and we work based on that instructional path to close the gap. And that program gives us the information we need to diagnose the problem, or the weakness, or the need, and how we can plan to grow that area. We use M-Class as our indicator for the tiering process and the supports that our students need. And we have an outstanding reading department that works very diligently with our tiering and support system of our students throughout the school. We use Lexia, and we have the Wilson Foundation's Phonics Program, also our indicators that are used to help us in placing students within that correct growth path that they need to be able to achieve or exceed their level. The interim assessments that I spoke about a few moments ago refer to an acronym as IABs. We are using those consistently in math and language arts to determine where our students are in meeting their proficiency level at this time. And I'm very proud to say that the data we are studying is showing that our students are doing very well. We're seeing 60% to 70% proficiency in the strands in practicing and preparing for Smarter Balance. And IABs are supposed to be a strong indicator of how our students will perform on Smarter Balance, because the people that design IABs design our Smarter Balance test. We've learned through research that the mistakes that students make are not always content-driven. It's usually going through the structure of the online testing, navigating through it. So we are simulating the Smarter Balance testing by using the IAB program for our students, and we are very proud of the results we're seeing in ELA and math in the growth in the achievement levels they have in each strand of the standards. And then we are also working very diligently on our chronic absenteeism. And if we go to the next slide, our chronic absentee team meets on a weekly basis. We are being very, very diligent in home visits, daily phone calls. We have set up a team where every person has a certain group of students that they call every day at home, and if we're unable to reach them, we are doing home visits to offer our services and anything that we can do to support the family to get the students to school. Our Family Resource Center, Parent Educator, is working very hard to also reach parents and give them the services and support they need to get the students to school. This chart, very hard to see, but it's a chart that we've adopted that shows every classroom, every day of the month, and we are tracking the weather as well, because we know in this school, and we have found the pattern, there is 40 to 50 children that continuously are that group that do not come to school on early dismissal days and bad weather. So we are targeting that group to see what we can do. We're reaching out to the community, to all of our community resources to see if we can advocate their support in meeting the need. Do we need to go to a babysitter's house to drop them off? We can possibly get that address changed for a drop-off on early dismissal. We're going to do whatever we have to to get the children to school. And this study has been working for us. We're seeing minor improvement, not huge improvement, but we are making small progress almost every day. I'm going to let Ms. Coelho speak to you about our social-emotional learning.
Thank you. So at Wilson, we do daily circles that are scheduled in the morning for a 15-minute block, if you will. And throughout the day, teachers are also embedding social-emotional learning within their lessons and just by our modeling, the school-wide expectations each and every day. So if you're not familiar with the SCL, or Social-Emotional Learning Model, there are many different components. PBIS, which you may know of, is just one piece of social-emotional learning. So we still have our PAWS expectation that the student sang about earlier, P for pay attention, A for act respectfully, work smart for the W, and stay safe for the S. But with social-emotional learning, we want students to begin to learn how to develop self-awareness so that they could have the gauge within themselves to be able to manage their behaviors. That's the goal. Many students are angry, happy, sad, but they don't really identify that, and they're not sure why. So the goal of social-emotional learning is to help them develop self-awareness, help them manage those different feelings, and then make responsible decisions. And hopefully, that will help with some of the other issues that they struggle with in how to resolve conflict and problem solve. And then, how do you form relationships? What is a friendship? What is a good friend? What does a good friend do? So we want to help them develop those relationship skills that will carry them on for their lifetime. And social awareness. What kinds of things do they need to be aware of in the community so that they can be successful and productive? And then, around the wheel, it just shows you the connection of classroom, the curriculum, the instruction, school-wide practices and policies, some of which is connected to PAWS. Like I said, PBIS and PAWS is just a snippet of that. And then encompassing the family and our community partnerships as well, because the bottom line is students need to be productive citizens. And without those daily life skills that we all need to develop and maintain is at the crux of all of the social-emotional learning. And something as simple as checking in with a student every morning from any of us is important and can turn their day around if they're having a bad moment or came in in a bad mood or have something on their mind. Just that five minutes of checking in. So it's very, very important. I'm excited and thrilled that we're moving in this direction, and we're in total support of it. Thank you.
So as we continue to just share some pictures with you about our circles, we're very proud of them. These are pictures of both of our BDLCs, our younger group on the right side, our older group on the left. And most of our older boys have been with me all years that I've been here. This is my fifth year. And we have a tremendous relationship, and I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud of them as well. They're doing very well in their circle activities, and it's made difference for many of them. It's very encouraging to hear the conversations that they have. And Ms. Parker, our master teacher in our BDLC, and in the other picture is our wonderful social worker, Ms. Sammet. Our student leadership team, that you did get to see a little snippet of, and they're with us still on the bleachers, having one of our student principal advisory committee meetings in our beautiful conference room that is used for PPT meetings, for all of our early childhood programs through the FRC conferences. And the students are really taking part in helping us hear the voices of our students in our school. And morning announcements, our students do a fabulous job with that. And the principals that visited yesterday for the focus walk got to see that work in progress. More of our Portrait of a Graduate, if you will, preparing for that future, we have within our own school not only reaching out to the higher levels of education to come in and support and work with us, we also are using our third graders to mentor our pre-K in reading. We're always trying to use that method of collaborative work between the students. In our Family Resource Center, we are very, very busy. And our efforts are to definitely support our families and our students. And at Wilson, we provide access within our community to a broad spectrum of early childhood and family support services, which foster the optimal development of children and families. For example, some of the work that we do through our FRC is we support our McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. We engage in that and support our families. And we actively seek to educate them about this act, because there are many that come to us that don't even realize that this service is available, and we help them to get those services. We have always a holiday food basket and gift exchange giving to our families in need. We come together, we collect food, we make food baskets, gifts, we make sure all the children have Christmas gifts. We have playgroups. Another purpose for our FRC playgroup area is we bring in the young children and the families, our parent educator, to help prepare students for early education. Books and Basketball is a before-school program that we offer for students. Community events. We have our Student of the Month award ceremonies. We have also our attendance award ceremonies as well. And we have student incentive, positive behavior intervention, and support activities. This coming next activity is our Kindness Dance, which will be held on the 14th Valentine's Day. And the students had to earn green tickets in order to be able to participate. And the green tickets are earned by meeting expectations throughout the school, in the classroom. And they had to earn 100 green tickets in order to buy a dance ticket. And then when we have the dance, it's a great event in here. They have some math estimation activities that they'll do. Different stations will be set up. They'll get to enjoy some music and also have some activity crafts to do if they're not one that likes to enjoy the music. And the student fundraising. I mentioned earlier that we tie the March Madness to a fundraising event. The students will vote on their team that they expect to win with box tops. They'll put the box tops in the bag, because we will have each team posted on the bulletin board for March Madness. And they drop those box tops in for the team that they choose that they want to win. So we tie a fundraiser into that learning activity as well. But throughout the year, we are always diligently working to raise funds for our students to have enjoyable activities and events. And this is just a few pictures that represent what I was just talking about, the community outreach, the food baskets, our parents that come in and help with gathering the baskets. We have parents that are vetted out as volunteers that come in and read to our students, help support on field trips as chaperones. They also come in and help at these peak times in getting food baskets together and also helping us deliver. And this is just another slide, talking about our parent engagement. At community events, we have the Title I, Math Night, Science Night, and Literacy Nights. Here are some of our community engagement. The gym that we're sitting in now is a donation of the work of NEJ and Mascola Family Foundation. They have been very, very generous to us at Wilson. The conference room that we saw in the earlier slides, also a donation from this company. Our playground, all renovated by this company. Our library received all-new furniture from this company. I have been very honored to have a very strong relationship with this company in helping to support our students at this school, and they've been extremely generous. They also give every child in the school a present at least once a year. So they've been very good to us. Waterbury Career Academy, again, is a collaborative partner of ours that we're proud of, that collaborative work. collaborative work. We talked about the holiday gifts for students and families. And one of our very own staff members is part of the DeGeorgi Roofing and Siding, that's Ms. Sammet. Her family has been very generous to our students here as well, giving gifts to many, many children. School supplies donations from United Methodist Church of Waterbury. And then the Family Resource Center partners with community organizations for the wellness of our students. We're at the WOW Center, which is the Walnut, Orange, and Walsh Neighborhood Revitalization, Zone Association. And then we have Safe Haven, Bridges to Success, Acts 4 Ministry, and the United Way of Waterbury. And over here in this picture is also another collaborative effort we have with the Portrait of the Graduate. We have college students coming to Wilson to fulfill their internships for early childhood. We have an intern from Nogentuck Valley Community College working with our kindergarten, Ms. Rico's class, fulfilling her intern hours. And then we have our after-school programs that we're very proud of. 21st Century on the left, that is managed by our lead teacher, Ms. Vega, does a phenomenal job with our children. And then on the other side is our ESH, Extended School Hours. And we had our Mr. May here to entertain and teach the children about recycling during one of our courses that we had for ESH one evening. And we have future Science STEM vendors coming in for both programs as well. So that is an overview of what's been going on at Wilson and the hard work that all of us are doing for the betterment of our children here in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Principal Rosner? Any questions? And we'd like to acknowledge your staff, if you'd please stand, and thank you for all your hard work. This is an amazing school.
Ms. Russo and all of the staff and all of our children who performed this evening, thank you so very much. Obviously, we can tell our students are excited about being here at Wilson. And we thank you for the presentation as well as for the great attendance here this evening with your teachers and staff. And all the parents, thank you very much for entrusting the children in our care. We truly appreciate that and we thank you for making certain that children are there each and every day and we are excited about the things happening at Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin and the board. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Principal Rosner? I just wanted to really commend you because we've been, I think it was over a year ago we were here. And I think all the efforts of your staff and the leadership here is just, you are remarkable. Progress has been made, so thank you for your hard work and dedication. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the compliment. On behalf of the staff, I want to thank you so much.
Amazing. Thank you. No questions? All right. Is there anyone from the public who did not sign up who wishes to speak this evening? It's next, okay. All right, next is Discussion Kids: Keeping Individuals Driven for Success Program. Sergeant Steve Pepper. There you go. Sergeant Pepper, okay, I like that.
Thank you. Commissioners, several weeks ago Sergeant Pepper Resnick came to talk with me along with other officers in the Waterbury Police Department as well as our police chief. And we talked a little about how to intervene for children that, to prevent further disciplinary and to prevent further incidents with law enforcement. And I was very excited about the conversation and the possibilities to really begin early intervention. We believe that we could also support that with our Title IV funding and asked the sergeant to come back with a proposal. He did. We're excited about it. We believe we can start relatively soon with the program. And we invited him this evening to be able to talk about the kids program. And I love what you're calling it.
Thank you. Well, good evening and thank you for the opportunity for letting us address the board about the kids program. My name is Sergeant Steve Pepper Resnick. To my left is Detective Sisitis. And to my right is Officer Mike Tripp. He's one of our school resource officers who will be an integral part of making the kids program function. We are here to discuss a program we presented to Chief Spagnola and Dr. Ruffin regarding school arrests. Our kids program is a first-time offender, pre-arrest diversionary program. It will enable students who get into trouble to have a positive interaction with police without resulting in a criminal record. We hear every day about life skills and what students need to be successful after they leave the Waterbury Public Schools. I agree 1,000 percent. They do need life skills and one of those skills they require is accountability. Past diversionary youth programs also lacked accountability. That I can promise will not be the case here. We will present, teach, and monitor for compliance every step of the way. If at any time the offender is not fully invested in the program, they will be removed and their case will be forward at the juvenile court for prosecution on the original charges. The kids program will be an eight-hour program divided into three different phases. The first phase will be a two-hour block. This will be with the student and guardian. We have created a contract for all parties involved stating a set of guidelines we will require to be part of this program. Punctuality, safety, appropriate dress code, and respect. These are some of the life skills that we all keep talking about that are needed to be successful in life. Second phase will be a four-hour block that will consist of a community service to be performed in your school that the incident occurred in. This will be an opportunity to get back to the place where you caused a disruption or a disturbance in. This community service will be monitored by a member of the U-Squad to ensure full compliance. This process will lean heavily upon the school resource officers and the school administration in order to be successful. The third phase will be a two-hour block with just a student involved. It will allow us to reflect back on the incident they were involved in and to discuss how they will act going forward to avoid these types of issues in the future. This time will allow us to mentor the students and identify if these particular individuals require additional services, which we can facilitate in the future, such as counseling, safety plans, health or wellness checks. Certain offenses will make the offenders not eligible for this program. Some of those offenses, but not limited to domestic violence, serious assaults, or sale of narcotics. And each case will be evaluated by our staff to determine eligibility with the final approval laying with the chief of police. Upon completion of the program, each participant will be given a certificate, a T-shirt and free registration to all PAL sports leagues in the future as long as they stay out of trouble. Also, we will assist the students in acquiring summertime employment within the city. We'll also supply contact information for the U-Squad for any future questions or concerns by either student or guardian.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. My easy and quick response is thank you. I have felt all our programs in the past have been nothing but a list of excuses that we did not follow through on. I like the fact that we're going to evaluate and when there is an opportunity to give a second chance, we do. Responsibility and a few of the other words you used are tremendous. And I thank you because I've been very critical of our past programs. I did not feel there was any way a student would even feel as though they've been disciplined in the past because we just patted them on the back and said, "Okay, Sonny." My concern has always been for those affected, whether it's a teacher, a single student, or an entire classroom. And I really don't think that population was respected in past policies or procedures that this program had. So again, thank you and I like the way this one sounds. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez.
In your Phase II, you said that they were going to do restitution in the school that the offense happened. Is this going to be during school hours?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be just, it'll be community service. And that's when I said lean on the administration of the schools. We want to work with the school resource officers and the vice principal and the principal to find out exactly how can this child give back to what he has taken away during this incident.
All right. As long as it's not during school hours because I could see that becoming more offensive to the student if their fellow students see them having to do a community service, you know, that we're mocking would happen and that might just make matters worse. In the beginning, you had also mentioned that you decide, who decides the level of participation?
That'll be the U-Squad that would decide and the final decision would come with the chief of police.
Whether they felt that that student participated enough or not enough, and then they would deem if that student should now go to wherever the juvenile...
It would be forward at the juvenile court. So obviously, if the student is coming to our program when we have other students and guardians there and they're doing the same thing, and I included in each of those packets the guidelines for both parent and for guardian and for the student. And some of those rules would be no cell phones. It would be respect to everyone in the room. So if someone is sitting there, and unfortunately, some of these incidents that we witness in the schools, they become pretty rough sometimes. And the schools here really do their best to diffuse these and to mediate these issues until we get there, and we also try. And let me tell you, some of the times, it's vulgar, it's violent, and that's the kind of behavior that we're not going to stand in our program because that's doing nothing but, in a sense, coddling them even further.
Okay, so that's it for now. I'll, that's it for now.
Okay. Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you. I think my first question is probably for Dr. Ruffin. How does this program, which, and I would agree with Commissioner Vanstone, I think I like more than some of the other ones we've tried in the past, how do they play together? Is this going to be taking the place of the other interventions we have currently been working in? They, I'm just trying to, if a kid is acting out and he's, you know, talking to our SRO, how do we know which, are they going to JRB, are they going to the kids program, are they going to here? Who traffic cops that?
No, it doesn't take the place of all of the other interventions that we have, but it does serve as a bridge from programs that we used to have that we no longer have. As I understand it, before I came into the district, there was a program with juvenile system that has gone away, so we no longer have access to that. So if a child becomes, is troubled or there's some issues that really need further intervention, that piece is missing. And so this is a way to be able to address it before it becomes so out of control that there is no other choices. So the in-school interventions that we currently have are still going to be administered. But let's say you have a child whose behavior would almost automatically dictate that there is law enforcement involved, but because this may be a first-time offender, instead of going to law enforcement, the kids program would actually take that child and that child would be the child that would intervene in the kids program.
Commissioner Vanstone, if I may.
Sure.
The JRB is a great program. The problem is, when we're, prior to arresting them, we actually try to reach out to the parents before the arrest just to find out the level of involvement here. The parents, a lot of times, request we do not send them to JRB because JRB is a six-month program. The problem is, parents say to us, "Just send me to juvenile court. It's quicker, it's easier, and will be done in a couple months." So this is something we're trying to do, this whole program, we're trying to do in a five-to-six-week timeframe so that make it a condensed JRB, if you will.
Okay. And I think I can understand that. One of the things you had mentioned, and I think I like the idea and concept, is that if a student causes a commotion in school X, they pay restitution to school X. I'm hoping we don't have a whole lot of these kids for you guys to deal with, so let's pretend there's a scenario that we have five kids but at five different schools. Is that the most efficient way to handle that with five of you guys at five different schools at any given time? Or how, if the numbers aren't a large pool, which I guess is what we're hoping, what would be another way to maybe do that rather than dilute your talents over a multiple amount of properties?
I will say this, unfortunately, the number's a little larger than I think we want to admit. This year alone, since school started until February the 1st, there have been 211 school arrests in the city of Waterbury. So of those 211, 120 have been first-time offenders. So it would benefit to have these kids going into their own school because unfortunately, as much as you act out in front of your friends, and a lot of times they're putting on a big show. And I think it's, sometimes it's humbling to go back and work in your school and, again, try to give back a little to what you took out. There are opportunities, sporting events, plays, different things that go on at nighttime that a lot of our SROs are already at these events. So it would be easy for them to monitor them while they're there.
Okay, so I'll, I guess I'll ask the question the same way on the opposite end. Okay, so now you've got two dozen kids. We have one SRO and another person there, or how do we make sure that we have, you know, enough adults watching the kids making restitution that don't just wander off into the bathroom?
There will always be an SRO for every student involved.
So if I got two dozen kids there, there's going to be two dozen SROs there?
Well, we wouldn't do it all at one event. We would try to stagger it, like I said, from different schools. If we break down the schools, there's not a single school here that's had more than 30 arrests. And a lot of those, again, are not first-time offenders. As many first-time offenders we do have, we also have kids that have been arrested nine times that certainly would not be anywhere near applicable to our program.
And just for my own definition, what are we, if a kid did something last year, if we start this program tomorrow?
Yes.
Is going tomorrow forward, everyone considered a first-time offender? Or if you already have something on the record, it's on the record?
If you already have some kind of record, you are not a first-time offender.
Okay. All right. I think overall, you know, whatever we can do to get kids back on the right path if we find they're straying, we need to do. Throwing them in jail doesn't help anybody. So if we can reach out to the kids and give them the benefit of your guys' expertise and explain to them, you know, being, you know, yet another voice, I think, trying to get them on the track, if we can do that, you know, I think it's something we, you know, would save money in the long run and pay dividends in society. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. My question would be of interest in the model for this program, kids program. Was that a national model or is it born locally?
No, this is actually something the three of us came up with.
Well, that's amazing. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I would copy that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sorana Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess my question would also be, I thank you guys, by the way, because I think anything that can really help our students, prevent them from having to go, you know, to jail is obviously a plus. But is there, we talk about restorative practice, and I know that we try to do stuff before things happen or while they're in school, but is there something that can happen besides the community service where there's a restorative practice so that when they do come back, like from suspension, or so to speak, which you guys would be great role models to begin with and especially the resource officer, but is there going to be like a restorative practice where it prepares them, some kind of, I don't know if just the community work would be enough, like I wonder if there's something that they can, you know, talk to other people and build, yeah, to, before they're returning back to school as a, you know, preventative thing. I see where Juanita was mentioning, making sure that it's after school so other kids don't see them. But at the same time, like the other upside is if people see them, they're going to be like, "Well, I don't want to do that because that would be me next," you know? But I like it that it is after school so they have more privacy. But yeah, I just want to thank... Um, but, yeah, I just want to thank you guys, and I'm just curious to see if there's something a little bit more besides the community service that can help, you know, as well as the parents, and kind of just build some, a better practice, um, to prevent that from happening again, or another offense.
We have, uh, we have reached out, and we spoke to Jim Fletcher, who's our head states attorney for the juvenile system. Uh, he fully endorsed the program, and he also offered his services to come in during our last two hours and speak to the kids. Uh, we also, since we have such a strong relationship with so many principals and vice principals, we also would like maybe to have them come in, uh, sparingly, i- i- if they can certainly come in and give us a, a few minutes, and explain to what the impact is their behavior is, takes away from the school environment. And I think just having everyday people come in and address it, maybe it'll hit home a little bit, to make them understand that, you know, these are just, a lot of these teachers and a lot of these principals, and they're just moms and dads, just like, just like mine is.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
In terms of the criminal offenses, what is the level of offense that we're talking about, in terms of the criminal offense?
Ones that would be included or exclude them?
The ones that would be included.
Included. Most of our, our incidents in schools, uh, certainly not to minimize any of the, the criminal offenses, but, uh, some kind of fight, we see a lot of fights in hallways and, and lunchrooms, uh, simple possession of, of marijuana, it, it, those are the kind of things that we've tried very hard to mediate at this, at this level. So, anything involving, uh, serious physical injury to anyone, student or staff, uh, any kind of serious damage to school property, and again, anything that would bring us to the, the level of sale of narcotics or something, that would be something we would exclude.
Okay.
I just, I just would like everyone to know, I know the arrests sounded very, very high, they're, they're kind of on pace from the last few years, but I also want to point out that we have school resource officers in all our middle schools and, and all the three major high schools, if you will, and they have had a total of 686 mediations. So that's, we've gotten to the, the point of an arrest with, with the staff, and the officer stepped in to mediate that, so it didn't result in an arrest. So there is a, a level even before the kids program that would kind of kick into place.
Okay, that sounds good. But I mean, just to piggyback, if I may, I think there needs to be the feedback loop, so that when the child goes back to the school or participates, there has to be ongoing communication with that child and the other kids involved, because sometimes, you know, one kid gets caught or whatever, and there's other students involved. So that, that has, I think that's what we're thinking about, that cooperation with you as well as the school, to make sure that when they go back, they're not being bullied. Sometimes it's a bullying incident, or sometimes it's, it's a, it's a street issue. Uh, so I think it's incumbent upon this loop now, that we have this wonderful resource, that the school community isn't just, "Okay, so you went to that program, and now things are back to normal." No, the school has to continue to work with these students to make sure it doesn't happen again. And the practices that we're talking about, the restorative circles, the restorative practices, uh, we have to create that culture, and I really commend you for coming up with this program. I think it's going to be another piece of what the whole school district is trying to do. It's not a panacea, right? Uh, but it's, it's a great effort to try to provide that structure that our kids need, so thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Harvey.
Two questions. Um, how involved are you, uh, what's the mediation between the parents and the, the school, and, what, you know, how involved are we getting the parents in, in this program?
In this program? Well, they would be there, like I said, the first two hours. We want to make sure they're aware of the activity that the, the student is involved in, uh, and I, I can only point back to, to Officer Tripp, being one of the school resource officers. If I have a question about a student or an issue that's going on, I, I'm able to pick up the phone for Mike, or Officer Blocker, or some of the other school resource officers. So we know a lot about the kids and the family dynamic before we even, we start to move forward. So a lot of times, we may get, this, this kid, he has just the nicest family, it's going to be something easy we can work with, but there are a few times that we're met with, with a, quite a bit, a, amount of resistance from some of the families. So we're trying to bring them in and, and maybe change the way that not only the kids, but some of the parents look at the police department, and we want to make sure they understand, "We're not only here to arrest your kids." We want to try to change that, so they feel comfortable with us.
When you refer to the first offender, or some terminology you used, and I was questioning why you were using that terminology, is the, is the student arrested? Is the student in the system?
It is a pre-arrest, this-
It is a what?
A pre-arrest. So he will not be arrested. That's the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so they're referred to as an offender?
They, yes, they are. Because they, they were involved in an incident, if they were arrested or not. Now, the fact that they weren't arrested is pending upon the completion of the program. So in a sense, yes, they are an offender.
Okay, okay. But you refer to them as students too, but you refer to them as offender, but, you know, I'm just trying to get my, wrap my-
I, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to split hairs, but the student involved would be the offender. So the student and offender are the exact same, same scenario here.
All right, so they don't, do not have a record at this point?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. What, what I would hope is, um, that you can come back to us and let us know how effective this program is. I'd, I'd love to know that, and, um, just to see, I mean, whatever we can do to stop the pipeline from school to prison.
We agree.
All right? Um, and, and that it's a, it's a viable program. I'd like to see some, you know, what the results are from it, and I thank you very much.
We hope it's good news.
Okay. Thank you, me too.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We look forward to hearing your success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Dr. Ruffin, for, uh, your leadership in trying to get some alternatives there. Okay, Mr. Zuda, request approval of a professional services agreement with Connecticut Education Network to provide internet service for the Department of Education.
Correct. Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin. Um, I'm here tonight to ask you that you approve the Connecticut Educational Network contract. The project will allow the Waterbury Public Schools to upgrade our current connection from one gig to 10 gig. All right. The added bandwidth is needed to handle the 15,000 di- district devices, plus the 12,000, um, student devices and, and, and staff devices that traverse our network on a daily basis. So we have about 27,000 devices on our network with one gig, which is being saturated constantly. The contract is a five-years in duration, and the contract total is for $240,000, for $48,000 per year. Eighty-five percent of this contract will be paid by E-rate. Two-hundred-and-four-thousand divided by those five, eh, which is eighty-five percent, forty thousand dollars, forty thousand eight hundred dollars will be covered by the E-rate. Fifteen percent will be paid by the Department of Education, so that's, the total cost to the Department of Education would be thirty-six thousand dollars over five years, seven thousand two hundred dollars, and it's probably an increase of about two thousand dollars annually to go from one gig to 10 gig, which is about 10,000 percent increase in our internet bandwidth byte.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, any questions? Pretty selfish.
Yeah, soon as the upgrade goes through.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Mr. Gorman, request approval of a state-of-Connecticut purchase of service contract for the support for pregnant and parenting teens, women, fathers, and their families, SPPT program. Good evening.
Good evening, President Brown, Vice President Harvey, Dr. Ruffin, distinguished Commissioners, nice to be with you again. Um, this is a revisit of a project that we had here in the city for about eight, nine years. Uh, the funding for that in the seventeen, eighteen school year at Sunset, uh, it has been brought back through the Office of Early Childhood Education, different, um, source, and it is, excuse me, uh, about half of the funding that we had previously. Uh, Waterbury was observed at the state level as a model for this program, because we kept students in their regular high school, we did not transport them to one venue, uh, and provided really whatever was necessary to help pregnant, parenting teens, both women and men, fathers, uh, with case management, and do whatever was really necessary to help them gain eligibility for graduation. Uh, in our previous go-around with this, over the eight years that we did the program, we had some pretty startling statistics. We had eighty-eight percent of our students that were enrolled in the program actually graduate from high school. Uh, we had, I believe, seventy-four, seventy-five percent that either went directly into the workforce, or that went into post-secondary education. When the program started in 2009, the teen birth rate in Waterbury was approximately seventeen percent. Uh, I certainly don't claim that our activities, uh, were the sole reason for that, but I am very happy to announce that according to the town charts for Waterbury demographic data, that is now down to six percent in Waterbury from that.
Wow, that's-
Uh, and hopefully, we had some role to play in, in that, that type of progress. Uh, however, it is still about double the state average, and that's why Waterbury was selected by the CSD to be one of the participants in the program. So, I'm here to answer any questions you have about it. So, we'll go from there.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Joe, was the title of this always inclusive to fathers?
It was part of the design of the program. It did not include it in the title. This iteration is actually support for pregnant, parenting teens, women, fathers, and the families.
And, and do we-
So they've just extended the title, but it was always, uh, part of the design. Uh, George Hayes, a social worker at Career Academy, was our group facilitator for young men, uh, has done a great job with them, uh, particularly when it comes to doing work score, skills, uh, development, uh, finding summer employment for these students, and, you know, those, many times are the forgotten people in this, because they're estranged from the family, uh, and so those supports are very necessary for those students to be successful as well. Really pretty proud of the work George has done with them in the past, and I'm very pleased to announce that he has indicated some interest in coming back and filling that role again.
Excellent. Now, do we see good participation by the fathers?
At last count, when the, when the previous program ended, I believe he had thirteen young men who were coming continuously to the meetings that he would have with, about once a week, he would meet with them as a group, and then would also do some individual counseling as well. And of course, uh, also emails, phone calls, so on and so forth, but, uh, he would run a weekly group meeting, uh, with the young teen fathers, and he had very, very good participation rates with it. Wasn't perfect, you'd have some, you know, would join for a little while, leave, come back.
Okay. But, but knowing that the situation where fathers are, may be in or out of the picture, unfortunately, um, I think we need to make sure that awareness is out there, that we have the support for the fathers as well. Because if we show that support, and they get in the program, they then, hopefully, will be more supportive of the situation. So I, um, I'm glad we're doing a program, it's fantastic, but I really would like to emphasize keeping the fathers engaged. Okay? Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Just, just for, you know, with all your experience, if, what, over your eight years, what is the biggest barrier these students face in staying in school that we may think about addressing?
Statistically, during the period of, uh, just prior to birth and the, the postpartum depression phase, if you will, uh, the eight weeks after birth is a critical time to remain engaged in school, because the data shows that the, the farther out the return to school, uh, that time period is prolonged, the less the chances that that student will actually come back at all. Just knowing that it, it, the feedback that I got from kids who were in the program was just knowing that there was an adult looking out for them, checking up on them, was interested in their success, was providing them with, with just that support, that you can do this, and you can do this not just for your baby, but for yourself as well, because if you do that, then your baby will make out much better in life if, if you're suc- successful yourself, uh, and to not be hung up in the guilt and the pity, and, okay, this is the situation, now move forward, be strength-based in your approach to that, and we'll give you what you need to help you get there. And, uh, sometimes it means having some, some difficult conversations with kids about, "We're trying to help you, but you have to be ready to help yourself as well." So, it's, it's sort of a fine line that you dance with it, but-
That mentoring, the mentoring and the connection.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. When does it start? Soon, or?
We, we have not started yet.
Okay.
I have lined up, uh, interviews for next week, but we will not hire anyone until we actually have approval, uh, hopefully from, from this board and also the Board of Aldermen. And the CSD has not been very punctual in terms of delivering funds, but we will not be spending really anything, uh, until that gets buttoned up, so.
Okay, thank you.
So far, it's just been time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, December 2019 Monthly Expenditure Report. Uh, I don't know who's doing that.
Actually, I believe it's a report that's in the packet, not necessarily-
Oh, just in the packet, okay, all right.
Just included in the packet.
Uh, I don't know if anybody had a chance to read it, if there's any questions? Okay. Uh, Six, uh, Mr. Schwartz, chronic absenteeism, and Dr. Biles, and, uh, Ms. Davis. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Um, to Dr. Ruffin, our superintendent, President Brown, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners and Waterbury family, we are so excited about being here on tonight. We want to share with you the wonderful work that we are doing in our People's Services Office. So again, thank you for this opportunity. With me, I have Ms. Jackie Davis, the District Climate and Attendance Coordinator, and we also have, uh, Mr. Darren Schwartz, who's helping us in running things from over there.
The tech guy.
The tech guy, yes. Our first slide talks about what our mission is, and of course, that is to educate the whole child. We want our students, scholars, to be healthy, we want them to be safe, engaged, supported, and of course, academically challenged. We now want to share a video with you about a young man named Jordan. Jordan's parents provided him with a great, um, initial childhood, and they released him to our schools. Jordan was so excited about school, but as you watch the video, we want you to pay very close attention to not only what Jordan says, but the reaction on his face, as well as how the adults interacted with him.
Hey, Miss Akil. Did you see that? Why would somebody do that?
Please go into the classroom, no talking, quietly.
Hey, Miss Mara, how you doing?
We need you inside.
How do you think that makes us feel?
I forgot my number.
What's your name?
Jordan.
What's your last name?
Carter.
All right. Go ahead.
School is hard enough.
Come on in, sit down quietly at your desk, and begin writing.
This kind of stuff just makes it harder.
I said quietly, please. Who's talking? Is it you, Sophie? Don't let it be you.
Don't believe me? Please just watch.
I'm not up here for me, I'm up here for you. Pay attention, okay? Now, somebody answer me, somebody needs to answer me really fast.
Every time we're ignored, or yelled at, or silenced, the teacher takes away what's possible.
No horseplay, no running, and especially, no talking.
Moment by moment.
Ms. Garrity, your students' behavior yesterday in the lunchroom, it was terrible. Next time- Next time, silent lunch. Did you hear that? Stay in line and catch a bubble. I'm not playing.
If this is education, we're in trouble. Bye, Ms. McGarrity.
As the video depicts, school was not at all what Jordan thought it should be. One of the issues that we feel that is we need to gain or have relationships with our children through restorative practices, we are, teams are trained and they receive the direct support as it relates to restorative practices. We want you to know that it's not just a program. It's not just something that we do. It's a mindset, it's a shift, and it allows us, instead of being reactive to what our students have done, it allows us to be proactive in building relationships. Again, we still discipline them, but we make sure that they understand the consequences of their actions. It goes back to being accountable, which is what the officers were talking about, and also taking responsibility for what you've done and how that has impacted and affected others. And once students, scholars, understand that, they'll be more accountable for their actions. Jackie is going to talk about some of the things that we have been doing in our schools as it relates to restorative practices.
So again, I want to thank the board for allowing us to take this restorative practices journey because it is a journey. It's not just a one-step process, and there are schools in our district who are at different points in this journey. So some of our schools are way down the road. They're experiencing the joys and the benefits of restorative practices, and they are leading the way for others. We do have some schools that are still sort of in the house, on the porch, what we like to call healthy skeptics, trying to figure out how this impacts their daily work and how this is going to affect what they do in their building. But what we've seen happen is those schools that are on the porch, sort of looking out, they're seeing the great work on the horizon and saying, what can I do to get to that place? And so as you all know, last year, we received training. Every building had a team to go to training with Joanne Freyberg from the State Department of Education, and so this year, we've been receiving technical assistance from her and Leslie Carson. And I want to report out to you that they have been extremely impressed with the work that they've seen in some of our buildings. And so I want to mention Kingsbury has done a wonderful job in terms of using circles to build that community. In that video, you see that there are a number of adults that come into contact with a student during the day. It's not just a classroom teacher. And so Kingsbury recognized that, and they did training with their crossing guards, they did training with their cafeteria staff, they did training with custodians, because it has to be a team process. It has to infiltrate the culture of that building. The other school is Washington has done a tremendous job in terms of using circle for instruction, for community building, and I would challenge you, if you get an opportunity to visit either of those schools, to see how this plays out, you will definitely be pleasantly surprised. Since then, I believe it was Sprague that presented to their fellow colleagues some of the results that they've been seeing. So they have actually seen a decrease in some of their exclusionary discipline as they work on being more restorative in their building. And so those are some of the successes that we're looking for as our schools continue down that journey.
What are restorative practices? They address and discuss the needs of the school community. They build healthy relationships between educators and between school staff and students. It resolves conflicts, and it holds students, scholars accountable for their actions, and it repairs the harm that may have been done, and the goal is to restore those relationships. There are three tiers that we emphasize for the restorative practices, and they are, of course, reaffirming relationships through developing social and emotional skills, repairing relationships that may have been broken, and it prevents harm from happening, as well as it rebuilds relationships. Meaning, I think the officers talked about it, you know, once the students return to school, you know, there needs to be some rebuilding there on the relationships that they've harmed and they've damaged because of the incident or the consequence. As we look at our restorative practices, one of the goals that we really wanted to focus on is how do we, of course, decrease our suspension levels? And the data shows that we're doing just that. From fifteen to sixteen, again, to seventeen and eighteen, our numbers are declining, and as of February first, two thousand eighteen, compared to February first, two thousand and nineteen, our in-school suspensions and our out-of-school suspensions have declined. With the restorative practices and, of course, being supportive of our culture and climate, we must deal with the chronic absenteeism because, of course, when students are absent because of out-of-school suspensions, that plays a role in their absenteeism. So I won't read the whole quote by Attendance Works, but I do want to focus on the very last sentence that says, "Research and experience also shows that when we turn around chronic absence, we can turn around the trajectory of a student's academic career." And in short terms, if students are there, we can educate them and get them to the levels that they need to be. When they're not there, it's very little that we can do to educate them. Jackie will come now with the chronic absenteeism piece more.
So just briefly, just to review, when we're talking about chronic absenteeism, we're talking more than just truancy, so that willful not attending school, but we're talking about excused as well as unexcused absences, and that is so important because we're talking about missed instructional time. And so, we just completed our one-hundredth day of the school year. Woo-hoo! So when we're talking about a chronically absent student, we're talking about a student that has missed ten days or more for any reason. And so chronic absenteeism is important because research has repeatedly shown the cumulative negative impact that it has on student achievement. So the student that has missed as few as two days a month throughout the school year is five times more likely to fall behind in reading and math, not to mention some of the social things that come with being behind your classmates and missing out on a day. And so when you're talking about looking at a total effect of chronic absenteeism, it's not just the day that a child misses in school that they're missing an instruction. So when they return to the classroom, oftentimes, they're confused as to what's going on because they missed instruction the day before. So the first day they return, they're not getting the full weight of that instruction because they're trying to catch up and figure out what's going on with their classmates. And so this is definitely a priority for us because we have a lot of exciting things happening in our district in terms of curriculum and making sure our students have the right resources, but we don't want chronic absenteeism to be an obstacle to success. So the first thirty days, we sort of focus on these core intervention strategies. Number one is to engage students and parents and help them to understand the importance of attendance. I'm very proud to report that Crosby High School had a parent meeting on a Wednesday night and had over a hundred parents attend. They were very intentional about what they did. They sent out a survey to all students who were marked as chronically absent and asked them to select the reasons they felt were contributing to their absenteeism, and one of the biggest factors was sickness. And it has been a very rough season. I feel like I haven't been a hundred percent since September. So what the team did is they brought in Staywell, and Staywell spoke very specifically to that piece with parents about the services that they offer in the building. A number of the families there did not know that that service was available to them, so that was a great success and something that we look to replicate in other buildings. We also want to recognize good and improved attendance, not just perfect attendance, because sometimes that is very difficult even for us as adults, but we want to monitor improved attendance. And so I want to use it as an example. Wall School has been having some issues with their attendance after this arctic vortex and ice quakes and everything that we've been having, but snow squalls, everything. But the principal sent out an email this morning to her staff saying that since we've been back, they've been reaching their daily attendance goals, and she said to the staff, "Make sure you take your classes by our attendance wall and show them their accomplishments." She CC'd our office on that message, and as soon as we got the message, I ran to the dollar store and I said, "Blow, I need twenty-five balloons." And then I thought about it, I said, "My car is not that big, give me fifteen balloons." So we took the balloons and we hung them up in the hallway around that attendance board to show them that this is important to us, you know, we're excited when you guys take that effort and to come to school daily on time. The other piece is to monitor attendance data, and I publicly have to thank Will Zuda and his team for the dashboard that they've created for us. It's a very robust system, and if you look at it, it's very impressive. It is even more impressive since I've been a part of a peer learning network for the state of Connecticut, and the data that we're putting out far exceeds any of the data that's being put out by other districts in terms of how it disaggregates our data and drills down to look at, you know, where our areas of concern are. And so Will Zuda has done a wonderful job with his team in providing us with the data that we need to monitor what's happening with chronic absenteeism. We want to provide personalized early outreach, so if we notice that a student is having some issues with attendance, we want to give them that human contact, reach out to the families. Mrs. Rosser actually talked about some of the interventions that they do here at Wilson, and I think she explained very clearly what that looks like. And in the middle of all of that, we want to develop programmatic responses to barriers. So we've had the opportunity to sit down with every single administrator in this district and find out what are some of the very real barriers to perfect attendance in their building or good attendance in their building. And so what we have done with that is we've made a list of different areas that are of concern and what stakeholder is connected to that area of concern. And so now we're going to those stakeholders and saying, listen, this is an issue. What can we do about it? We met this morning with the intake center to make sure that when we're bringing a family into the district, that we're giving them the right information, that we set them up to be able to attend as soon as they're registered, so there's no lag time by the time they register and by the time they're attending their first day of school. And so we're going to continue that process of engaging our stakeholders. So in moving forward, we have this beautiful pyramid structure that I'm sure you are very well aware of, that multi-tiered pyramid. The difference with this model is it's inverted. Most times you see that tiered structure, it's from the bottom up, but it is inverted in this case to display the fact that dealing with chronic absenteeism is cutting off that funnel of students going from a tier one where we are celebrating good attendance and keeping them from funneling down into a more severe or chronic level. So going forward at the tier one, we are looking to do a citywide marketing campaign just to let the city know that we are very serious about attendance. I believe our school motto is, "Students today, leaders tomorrow." So you have to attend today if you're going to lead tomorrow. And so we want to look at how we can get that message out into the community where our families are. On a tier-two level, we are actually a part of a peer learning network with the state of Connecticut, with the State Department of Education, and so we've been working with them on what are some of the early things we could do with students who are on that moderate chronic tier. And so one of the things that we're really going to be focusing on is connecting each one of those students with a success mentor, and again, that's what Ms. Rosser was referring to. Wilson is a part of that peer learning network along with Enlightenment and Kennedy, and so they've been attending meetings down in Hartford, bringing that information back to the district and sharing it with their colleagues. And the very, the most intensive tier is that tier-three student that has very intensive needs and making sure that we connect them with the services that addresses that level of chronic absenteeism. And so we do have an ESSA target as a district for our chronic absenteeism. So by the end of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, the state would like us to be at fourteen point three percent of chronic absenteeism. As of January, our rate was at sixteen point fifteen percent. And so we're going to continue to work tirelessly to make sure that we're addressing some of the barriers to attendance.
Now, let's look back at Jordan. Jordan will say that it doesn't have to be this way, and as the People's Services Department, again, as we work on all of those needs and making sure that we educate the whole child, if we could talk to Jordan today, we would tell him that, no, it does not have to be this way, and here at Waterbury Public Schools, it won't be.
Bye, Ms. McGarrity. Frederick Douglass said, "Once you learn to read, you'll be forever free." The way is now, two of the three of us will never be able to really read. It doesn't have to be this way.
Hey, Jordan. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
Everyone we meet throughout our day can make a difference.
I've been waiting for you to arrive.
All the difference.
How are you? Good. How are you?
Great.
Hi, Jordan. Bye, Jason.
Good morning, Jordan.
How are you?
I'm doing well. Thanks for asking. How are you?
Good.
Go ahead, put your number in.
Talk with us, not at us.
That's okay, I'll look it up for you. Go ahead, sweetheart.
Okay.
All right.
Teach us what we need to know. That's how we get smarter.
Well, good morning, Sophie, Janesia, and Jordan.
And when you talk with us and teach us, give us bigger and bigger words.
Now, what I'd like you to do, children, is turn around and converse with your neighbor and discuss where the mother might have gone.
Words that we can use to read and understand.
She has prayed for eagles, so she hunts at night.
And that will take us places we could never reach without you.
Remember, we're entering the learning zone. Now, how can we show our respect to the children and teachers who are working?
We can walk quietly.
Yes. Okay, kids, so what I'd like you to do is continue writing your narrative, documenting your emotions, if you were the baby owl and your mother abandoned you in the nest.
What can you do? Learn all that you can so that you can challenge us to be our best.
You would have stayed and assisted them in whatever they needed.
Share yourself with us and show us how to share ourselves with others. Give us courage. Give us compassion. Help us find our own voices so we can become who we are meant to be.
Wow, that's great. Any questions, Darren? Please come and join us. Any questions, Commissioner? I just had one. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Stango, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a question. I have a question on one of the data sheets here, I think it's page seven, and it talks about percentages. And so in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, our percentage of absenteeism chronic was eighteen point two. Do you have data on how that compares to other districts of our size in Connecticut and of our DRG?
We do. I believe we presented that maybe a year ago to the board. I know we present a lot of data. At that time, there was only one other district that had a lower chronic absenteeism rate than Waterbury Public Schools. I believe it was Wyndham that was lower than us. Typically, we have seen other districts in our DRG around twenty to twenty-five percent. We have seen high schools up in the eighty percent range outside of Waterbury.
So that means that we're doing well as far as that's concerned of our comparisons.
I think we're designed to get the results we're getting right now, so I wouldn't say we're doing well because our ESSA target drops every year, and the goal is to eventually get to five percent. And so do I think with the right team we have in place and with the principals, as you heard earlier, Ms. Rosser and principals focusing in on chronic absenteeism, do I think we can get there? We're going to try. Five percent is a lofty goal, but I- 5% is a lofty goal, but I think it's a, it's a goal worth attaining. The more we can have students in school, the better academic achievement we'll have.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, guys, for, for your hard work. I truly appreciate that. I know especially with the chronic absenteeism, that's always been an issue. As far as the restorative practices, I'm glad you guys are here because going back to the police officers with the kids program, I know Ms. Davis, we spoke briefly during the legislative meeting about restorative practice for kids when they return after suspensions. Does every school have a prevention specialist? Like I know, you know?
Every school does not have a prevention specialist. All of our comprehensive middle schools have a prevention specialist and a behavior technician who are trained in restorative practices. All of our comprehensive high schools have a behavior technician who is trained in restorative practices. WHAMs does have a behavior technician and yeah, so they are, he is trained as well.
In addition, with the teams that were trained specifically when Michelle Baker and Noreen Buckley trained, in addition to the State Department, had monthly meetings for trainings last year. And so they met with those teams and all social workers were a part of those trainings. And every school does have a social worker at this point.
Okay, thank you. Well, because I was asking to maybe try to collaborate with that program if possible to kind of help bridge that gap that me and President Brown was, was talking about. I think that would be helpful for both the family, the students, and so, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we agree.
Thank you.
Vice President Harvey.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, if I'm incorrect about this, I'll stand corrected, but let me just start with the question. Does Wilson have its own attendance counselor? And I may not be calling correctly.
No, the, there are six attendance counselors that the elementary schools share. And they also, many of them utilize parent liaisons as well to do a lot of the reach out and the work.
So we have a goal with chronic absenteeism. And yet, we have to split resources, personnel between, now, I understand if I'm not, if this is not correct, tell me, but it's, there's someone that splits Wilson and Walsh? And those are the two, not worse, but the ones that are, that we're focusing in on?
I don't know off the top of my head which, which attendance counselor goes to all the same schools, but I do know that in elementary schools in general, we are usually sub 10% chronic absenteeism. Some of them go up a little bit higher, Wilson being one of them.
Right.
And that's why I think originally the decision was the split of six attendance counselors, whereas the comprehensives and specifically the high schools where really most of our chronic absenteeism is housed, it's up into the 30%. And so that is really the big, those are really the big drivers to the number rising up till 16, you know, percent right now. But the original design around it was leveraging parent liaisons, social workers, and the attendance counselor. But right now, they are split, Commissioner Harvey.
All right. So, so how effective is that?
Well, it's, it's, it's hard to say what is exact causation and what is correlation. Right now, we've seen elementaries continue to, to drop. We have attendance counselors come in and out of the district on a continual basis. So sometimes, you know, we see schools go for long swaths of time without attendance counselors at the elementary school, but yet they still maintain as long as the principal is on top of the data, meeting with the chronic absenteeism team, leveraging the amount of staff they have within the school to reach out. You know, each school does have a full-time parent liaison. They have access to the social worker, the, the school psychologist. So they, they do leverage all of that. Can I say for sure that if we gave every single school an attendance counselor that we, that would be the silver bullet? I, I don't think the data actually suggests that.
Okay, but I'm not talking general. I'm talking Wilson and Walsh. And Wilson and Walsh tend to have attendance issues. So my question is, at what point do we say, wait a minute, we need to focus in on, on this, this school or that school?
Right.
I know we have parent liaisons, I know about that. But what I'm saying is, at what point do we say, wait a minute, we need to focus some attention here or focus some attention there?
Dr. Ruffin.
Yes, I, thank you very much, Commissioner. I think you're going to see evidence of that as we prepare budget for 2019, 2020. Because I've often said to my board as well as our staff, we need to see a return on investment. So as we examine staffing, as we examine the schools in need of improvement, the ones that are making gains in support, I've often said that not everybody gets the same thing. Sometimes someone needs more. So as we're examining those, I think you will see evidence of that in the way that we create the budget for the upcoming year.
Excellent, thank you. So that's what I want to hear. And I'm going to just say this, that this is no reflection on those who are responsible for this, for attendance, because they are very hardworking, but it's very, you know, I just find it difficult that we know what the problem is, but we have to split the time. So I'll be looking forward to that. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Okay. I'm on session.
Any other questions? Thank you. I am extremely excited about the direction of, of your office. Thank you so much because I think we really need this holistic approach. And I have a million questions, but I just gotta just touch upon three things. A lot of, a lot of this is about how, you know, connecting with our parents and trust and building those relationships. What is your opinion or about the use of Dojo and these communication technology devices? Do you feel that they're, they're helping with this connection with the parents? I don't know, maybe that's a question for Mrs. Rosser.
Yeah, I think it, I think that's really a question for maybe individual principals that are using it and how they're leveraging it in the building. As of right now, we don't have a system-wide approach to, to Dojo, so.
Well, I guess I'm mentioning that because if it's successful, then we should make it system-wide.
That's right.
So let's, let's start looking at these things, like if you would like to just comment on that, Mrs. Rosner, because I know that the schools that are using Dojo and, and communicating with the parents, they're, they seem to like it, so.
Thank you, Madam President. We do use Dojo very deeply here at Wilson, and we have found it does make a major impact. We have most of our families on our Dojo, so they get all of our messages. And we do believe that that has helped the improvement that we're seeing.
Great.
Thank you.
So I use that as an example to kind of cross-fertilize the things that are working in these, these schools. And I think at some point, we just, the schools that are not being innovative, we have to help them be innovative. I'll say that. The second thing, I'm so glad that you raised the health issues. And we have to figure out a way to, I sit on the wellness committee, as does Commissioner Adorno, and you've seen the stats with our children with asthma and so forth. And I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to really understand the health of our students. And one suggestion that came out of the wellness committee was in the intake center to find out if our kids actually have insurance. Do they have a primary physician? So that may be able to help the school nurses in addressing some of these things. Right now, our school nurses do not have that information. So, and the other thing we're finding out is that when the attendance counselors do or when the parents call, they're, they're not asked why your student is out. So we really don't know why they're out. So I'm just wondering if, if the protocol for actually answering the phone of why my student is out, or if there was some way so that we could track and find out right away, as you said, if the attendance counselor is not asking why, you know, in a very, you know, a nice way, gee, how's, I'm sorry to hear that, you know, how is your child, is he okay? I think the more information we have, then the outreach can be more effective. So I think there might be some training there or some, a dive into how we can make our systems more effective. And the other thing I would say is that we have to figure out how to get more of our kids to access the Stay Well clinics. At a recent meeting, they're not signing up, they're not enrolled in the Stay Well in the numbers that we would expect. At Crosby and Willby and, you know, the Crosby, Wallace. So if there was something that we could think about upfront, having them enroll. So it's easy, you know, for the parents because if a kid is sick and they're not enrolled, of course, they'll see them. But it's, it would be better, and Commissioner Adorno, you probably know more than I do, but it's, it's coming to my attention that it's not necessarily an easy process. I don't know, what do you think? Did I say it correctly?
President Brown, so not every school has a school-based clinic attached to the, to the school. And then a lot of our higher ones do, but the numbers of enrollments are really low. So we're just trying to bridge that communication with the families and, and get them to, to enroll because it is free of charge. They do physicals, they do dental work, they do counseling. So they're really great for those schools. So we just want to utilize them to their full potential and really help those families. And not only that, Liz, but as far as absenteeism, obviously if a kid is, has a fever and its test is positive for strep throat, they'll give you the doctor's note to excuse them from school because their policy is 24 hours symptom-free before you can return to school. But those sick visits are, you know, excused. As far as the asthma and the absentees, there's a lot of kids that have asthma and don't have inhalers. So the nursing division and public health officer are trying to come up with a plan. Mr. Gorman is here, coming up with a, a plan so that we could have a backup, you know, medicine so we can give them the nebulizer while they're at school. We can't help them when they're at home, but you know, those school-based clinics are a plus because if they don't have a provider, they could help them find a provider. And so it's just as a little help of something else that, that we can maybe, you know, use for, for the family. And, and even just the communication piece with the Dojo, that I hope it's bilingual for the families that may not understand, you know, the, there's the one language, so. But thank you, Liz, for bringing that up.
And I'm glad she mentioned that because, because of the work of Mr. Gorman and the Health Department and our nurses, I believe that they are going to be, every school does have a nebulizer. And they're going to be having the, the packets so that if they don't have the inhalers, they will have the obuterol in the packet so that they could use the nebulizer. So this will, I'm hoping, because I have heard this from many principals, that that is an issue if the kid doesn't have the nebulizer. Of course, when the stress escalates and they end up going to the emergency room. And just, we're learning all this stuff, 20% of the kids who go to the ER, it is because of asthma attacks in our school. So the more we can make those connections, which I'm so happy you are making, and working with Mr. Gorman and the school nurses, I think we can kind of really get out of the box thinking, as Dr. Ruffin always says, think out of the box. I think we can start making these connections. I just want to make one, one last ask, if you will. When the kids are absent, and you had mentioned it, Jackie, when they come back to school, what effort are we doing or what systems in place to help these kids catch up? So they're not walking into a classroom with, you know, kind of, you know, befuddled or not knowing and not feeling, and then that escalates, why, I'm going to be so far behind, I can't get to school, you know? That tension and anxiety, you don't have to answer me now, but I'm just saying, I think that's another piece also of that, of that holistic approach. So I'm very excited about your work and look forward to hearing much more. Okay, I said too much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have, oh, somebody else?
Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Great presentation, ladies.
Thank you. Anybody else? All set?
All set.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our wonderful Starbase program.
As you know, we have been partnering with Starbase since 2003. We're asking the Board of Education to continue to support this program in partnership with the Department of Defense, STEM-focused. As you know, our fifth graders take advantage of the program. And, and we, we have nothing but great things to say about it. It is, it does take place at NVCC. We do provide busing for students and we provide special ed busing for students that are in need of that as well.
I think we're all familiar with it, so we'd like to expand it. We want everybody to have it.
I wish we could, I wish we could.
Okay, thank you. And you might as well just stay there, right? So request approval of a student education affiliation agreement with Trinity Health of New England, Corporation for Allied Health Programs at Crosby, Kennedy, and Waterbury Career Academy.
Yeah, so as you know, we have some vibrant CNA programs for our students. And we, we are ever-changing with our partnerships. And, and so I know that Margaret's working with Corporation Council to finalize a few details with this memorandum so that you can see it before you have final approval. I do want to point out, though, that in conversation with the administrators about their allied health program is that I believe Mike Harris came to you a few weeks ago about Abbott Terrace. Right now, that's Abbott, no?
Fidel.
Fidel. Well, no, and Abbott is where they usually typically send their students for the CNA program. That's where they get their 60 hours.
Fidel's management.
And not, not St. Mary's anymore. And so I do want to talk to Margaret about that because they were using St. Mary's, but there's limitations in the space there. And so they are getting all 60 hours at Abbott Terrace currently. And so right now, they're not using St. Mary's, but it seems to be going well. And Crosby is now in, is now in recruitment mode for an allied health teacher. And so if you or anyone you know that has a nursing degree and a teaching degree, please, please send them our way.
Just to clarify, I thought they went to St. Mary's Hospital for the clinical part and, and, and then they went to the convalescent home for practicum.
According to Dr. Padua and Linda Richards, as of, as of today, when I spoke to them to ensure that I was giving you the right information, they said that they are using Abbott for the complete 60 hours of the CNA program.
Okay. That's, that's new.
Yes.
Because they would go to the hospital for the clinical.
Yes.
I didn't know that Abbott Terrace was a skilled nursing facility.
I didn't know that they changed it over until I talked to them today. So I will be talking to Dr. Padua about that change.
Yeah, would you look into that? Because I think that being in the hospital environment was so good for the kids.
I think part of it was the limiting number of students that they could actually take in, and Waterbury Career has such a robust number of students.
I see, okay.
And so that's, that's what I was told today, but I will make sure that I communicate back about that specific change. It wasn't anything to do with the services or the partnership at all, nothing but great things to say. Rob Johnston, I talked to him at length about the program he has, sent 16 juniors, 16 seniors. And, and Dr. Padua also had nothing but great things to say about St. Mary's and the partnership we've had with them.
Right. Okay, any questions? Okay, stay tuned, I guess. Okay, we just want to make sure that they're in the best environment. Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. We're on to item agenda number nine, that is request approval of the revisions to the bylaws of the Board of Education Policy Number 9010. Background on that, this proposed bylaw change has to do with the revision to the duties of the President of the Board of Education. The rationale for the bylaw change is this. After the last Waterbury municipal election in 2017, new Board of Education members commented that they felt unprepared to fully participate at board meetings and to understand the proceedings. So this concern came to the Policy Committee for consideration. In the committee discussions... In the committee discussions, the Policy Committee agreed that a formal training for all new board members, both elected or appointed, would be appropriate. In the Policy Committee, it was determined that the Board of Education President or his or her designee would be responsible for the content and training provided to the new members. So, in committee, it was determined that the revised wording of the duties of the President would add the following. The President or his or her designee will conduct orientation and training for all new board members. So, further, having said that, Robert's Rules of Order states that bylaw changes to the Board requires two reads at meetings of the Board of Education prior to the Board's vote. Therefore, two reads would be number one tonight at this workshop, and then the second read at the Board's next regular meeting on February 21st. A vote of the Board would then be required to put the bylaw revision in place. So, having said that, and to satisfy Robert's Rules of Order, I will formally read the policy change into the minutes. Currently, the bylaws of the Board regarding the duties of the President read as follows, currently. A, in the absence of the Chairman, the Board President shall provide at all board meetings. B, the President shall appoint liaison positions as appropriate. C, the President shall appoint ad hoc committees as needed. That's the current read. Now, the revision will add another duty, the letter D, as follows. The President or his or her designee will conduct orientation training for all new board members. And that is the proposed change addition. And that's the long and short of it, mostly the long.
Thank you. Are there any questions by board members? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Stango. Mr. Clark, you're up for 10, 11, and 12.
Evening, President Brown. Dr. Ruffin, Commissioners. The first one I, I'm down for is the building permits and use of facilities. I reviewed those with staff, and there's nothing really out of the ordinary or unusual based on history. So, if there's any questions about a particular concern, happy to field them.
Okay, no?
Okay. The next one, actually related to the permits and so forth, I believe relates to the issue that was brought up by, by some folks related to the use of buildings for soccer.
Soccer practice.
So, we researched this back to 2004. And it appeared as though it had come up before the Board and a request was made to suspend those permits based on some damage that had occurred in some of the facilities. And there's some question, as you read those minutes, whether that was actually approved or not approved and voted and so forth. But I can assure you that the next day, a directive came down to not do those permits anymore. So, the current standing, the position of staff at least, is that the Board had taken action and that staff followed the directive of the superiors at that time and has since not allowed the indoor soccer. There's still, the soccer field outside is still a permanent activity. So, the question comes up of whether or not we should allow those uses to come back. I think the, I spoke to the facility folks and some of the folks in athletics, you know, the concern remains. If you have a full-fledged sort of soccer game, indoors, lights and so forth, can become a concern. Checked with other districts, including my own former district, and there was indoor soccer was allowed, generally low-impact practice type of activity, when weather wouldn't allow it, conditioning mostly, with an understanding that it not be sort of full-on soccer kicking to the ceiling and that sort of thing. So, those are those factors. You know, we're happy to put that back out as something that could be permitted and monitor that closely if, if that's the will of the, the Board. You know, again, from, from the perspective of staff, there was a concern that they were following a directive of the Board. So, they didn't want to make an adjustment without another directive from the Board, or perhaps even just confirmation that there was no directive from the Board. So, that's kind of where we stand right now.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Will, for, for doing that homework. This came up to a couple of us a few weeks back, specific to one request in Bunker Hill, which is why it's kind of broken out. And we did just that, as Will spoke about. We looked back at some meeting minutes back in 2004, and there was a, a directive that came out shortly thereafter from then COO Paul Guadon ceasing soccer. And as I went through the minutes, I'm not of the opinion the Board took any action. We have one Commissioner talking about soccer, then there's some crosstalk, and then they move on, and they blessed all these. So, you know, I, I think it's probably been an administrative change at this point, but I completely understand the, you know, looking for some clarification of how to move forward. While I'm not a soccer player nor particularly a fan, I don't necessarily see why we would outlaw one sport versus another. I could just as easily kick a basketball into those lights or any other kind of material. I think the prudent course would be to allow soccer, but just to monitor it. If we see that one group organization is taking advantage of our buildings, we simply don't allow the waiver next time. I think there's probably a more pragmatic, practical, and fair way to allow kids to, to play soccer and still make sure that we maintain, you know, the integrity of our buildings, rather than just have a blanket no soccer policy. So, I am at least of the opinion that no official Board action is needed, but simply giving administration the clarification to say, yeah, we're okay with soccer, if that's the will of this, this group.
Any other thoughts? Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, if we talk soccer, I'm going to talk, so. Actually, the last time we were at this facility for a meeting, that fan above your head was full of balls, none of which were soccer. I made note of it to Mr. Schwartz. This size gym, I could see as having some concerns. If we're looking at the high school gymnasiums, by no means should we have any concerns. I did talk to one of our high school varsity soccer coaches. He said he actually has not done anything indoors. Whether it was the policy or not, he just has not done any indoor practices. I think we should allow it. In fact, I've been approached, we have our spring conditioning that CFC comes in and does for all our high school students. It's a program we started last year. They have inquired about forming an indoor team, which would continue that conditioning for our high school students. It's one team, all schools. So, I, I also don't think it was ever put in play. Plus, I'm not sure, was this memo for outside organizations or anyone?
The memo itself was pretty clear, it was all banned.
Okay.
And I, I did note, my one other deep bit of research was having dinner with Mr. Guadon. And the real concern at the time, I think there was some significant damage that had happened. So, he couldn't recall if it was a specific group or whatever, but there was some maintenance issues that had happened. So, that was, at the time, perhaps in the minds of folks, and why maybe it was just done and sort of forgotten about so easily. But, you know, I think it is something we could certainly monitor and do remember, per the protocol, the outside entities do have to have insurance. So, there's a way for us to chase back on them as well. So, I think it's something that, you know, we're happy to, to take in the requests, remind them of the rules of the road, make sure we get the insurance certificate where appropriate to the protocol, and, and keep an eye on it. Now that we have, you know, working cameras in many places, we can keep a real good eye on it, so.
Keep in mind that we are not having the discussion, and many of the outside organizations, the local youth organizations, use our indoor gyms in the winter and play baseball. So, I would think that is, has maybe more concern, but I wouldn't want to see any of it stop.
In my past experience, that's been a bigger damage. And they questioned, that wasn't us, and there's a softball-sized hole in the bleacher. I'm not sure how else it would have happened.
I'm sure.
But yes, I think that's essentially all uses you got to monitor.
Right. So, again, I don't know if there's action by us. I would not like to see us limit it. So, thank you.
It was not an official vote, but I just want, I think Mr. Clark and Sandy McCaslin brought it up to the Chairman of the Facilities Building, and they were working together, and they thought we could just have a conversation about it to clarify that, that there was no vote taken to, to stop it. So, I think, I think we're clarified now. Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. The rest is the notification of the superintendent to the Board, and we do have executive session.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to convene into executive session for the discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Thank you. Where are we going to go, Carrie?
You can use to go to the.
Carrie, where do you want to go?